Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, March 22, 2021. If everyone could please stand for a silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance, and I would ask that in your prayers this evening you keep the victims of the shooting in Atlanta this past week in your prayers.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Aldo - Aldo woman Cavallo.
Present.
Aldo woman Taro.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Markey.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Aldo woman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Salvia.
Present.
Aldo woman Weaver. Aldo woman Weaver.
Here.
Aldo woman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Fernerousky.
Here.
Fifteen present. Thank you. We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda this evening would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board should have called in. We'll be calling back to speakers. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak, and there's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. We can get the first speaker on the line?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Good evening. I'm asking that you pass item number three on your agenda. Also, I would ask that you pa - pardon?
Oh, go ahead.
Um, sorry. And item number four and five on your agendas this evening, I like these items. It continues the mayor's initiatives to make downtown thriving again. This Prospect Street, street parking is exactly what the businesses and the future of downtown are looking for. I think it's gonna help out with increasing more people coming to downtown and more businesses. So I would ask that you pass this. Item number six and seven seems pretty self-explanatory. I would ask that you pass that. Item number nine, I am definitely for the Wendell Cross Playground. Wendell Cross, it's really looking great up there, and I would, the kids obviously, more than ever now, are being cooped up, definitely need a place gate, so I would ask that you pass that. Item number 10, I would ask that you pass that, upgrading the Silas Brunson Branch up in Bunker Hill. And, you know, I just would ask, it seems like I would ask that you pass everything on the agenda, but most importantly, you know, we need to keep up with this. I know that we've had some, you know, some tough times during COVID, but we can't keep delaying some of these projects. And luckily, because of the fiscal management of this city and the mayor's office, I think that we are able to get these things done. So with your continued support, I would ask that you help this administration out, and I'm looking forward to the mayor's budget in another seven days. And thanks for all your hard work, everybody. Have a great night.
That's it? Okay. That's the only speaker for this evening, so the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, March 8, 2021. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the minutes as presented, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. With that, the next item would be to take up these items, so we would, at this point, go into a committee of the whole. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded to resolve ourselves into the committee of the whole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're sitting as a committee of the whole. The first item on the agenda this evening is the, from Frank Dever at the Palace, the submission of the January 31, 2021 financial statements in the December 2020 Board of Directors minutes for the theater. It's received and placed on file. Item number two is requesting the approval of a resolution proclaiming the month of April 2021 as the fair housing month in the city of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number two.
Motion having been made to approve. Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Does anyone have any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the resolution, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a request to set a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input regarding a proposed amendment to the Waterbury Code of Ordinances in order to amend Title III by adding sections 31.300 to 31.320 regarding a proposed Department of Engineering. I would suggest that we do the public hearing at our next meeting, which is April 5. So I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing with respect to the proposed ordinance change for April 5 at 6:55 p.m.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved unanimously. Item number four is the requesting the approval, is a request for an approval of a construction contract for Prospect Street Parking Facility project for not to exceed amount of $1,436,000 between Dayton Construction Company and the city of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Before we get to any discussion, Tom Hyde from the Naughton Valley Regional Development Corporation and also the acting director at this point of WDC would just like to do a short presentation on this, and then we'll see if there's any questions or any discussion. So at this point, Mr. Hyde, I'll turn it over to you, and I think you're gonna take over the screens for a little bit.
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you all for having me here today. As the Alderman said, my name is Tommy Hyde, and I recently became the interim director of WDC when Dan Page had left. I'm also currently running the Naughton Valley Regional Development Corporation, which was recently started as a regional entity to help promote economic development in the Naughton Valley. Prior to this, I had spent the last three to four years working for the State Department of Economic and Community Development, and just given that this was the first project under my, you know, tutelage that was gonna come before this board, I just wanted to introduce myself and show a little bit more about the project. So let me... So, as you can see, and as I'm sure most of you have read prior to this meeting, you know, this lot is really gonna be available to the general public to help increase the amount of parking in downtown Waterbury. We advertised the project on December 14th of last year and held walkthrough on December 22. We received 17 potential bidders, which was very good turnout. The bids were due on January 26, and we received nine qualifying responses. Of those nine qualifying responses, we selected Dayton Construction, Richards Corporation, and Herrera Construction Company to come in and submit their proposals. And if this group votes in favor of this, then, you know, construction will begin on April 1. The contract amount is not to exceed 1.4 million.
If I can interrupt you for one second, would any, all those who are not speaking, just put your, put yourselves on mute, because there's a lot of feedback coming through, and I think it's getting picked up. So if everybody is not speaking, you just put themselves on mute for a minute. I think it'll be easier to hear Mr. Hyde, so I apologize. Go ahead, Tom.
No, no worries at all. That, that sounds better. It's coming through on my end anyway. So the contract amount is to not to exceed 1.436 million dollars. You know, the expected project timeline is 300 days. The funding for this project will come from City of Waterbury Bond Funding, and some of the previous projects that Dayton has undertook for the city include the East Main Street Utility Improvement, the Washington Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and the East Liberty Street Bridge Replacement. As you can see, kind of, you know, in 2015, 2016, we tore down the existing structure on site, and for the last several years, it's really just been this grass lot. Hopefully you all can see, but I did include what kind of the, the future proposed design will be, and that will include amenities, including EV charging stations for electric cars, security cameras, as well as the blue light security boxes. So that's it. Wanted to keep it short and sweet. Happy to take any questions at this time. And the project manager from WDC, Dave Cody, is on as well. Actually, one more point is, we all know that there needs to be additional parking downtown. You know, this type of lot will really be able to help the Matic Museum after going through the renovations, and hopefully with the opening of the Palace Theater soon, give, you know, individuals both in the city and coming in for events and whatnot, an opportunity to park and do so in a safe place.
Thank you very much, and it's nice to have you here tonight. So does, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hyde or Mr. Cody, or any, any discussion?
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lopez? Okay, Alderman Lopez?
Thank you. Mr. Hyde, welcome. I just wanted to ask you if you kindly can email me the list of all the, the nine bidders with the total amounts that they bid on the project. And that's all.
Sure, happy, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo?
Just, Tom, how are you? Just on the, the 300 days, is it a hard deadline? Does they, do they have to get the project done in the 300 days?
They would have to get the project done in 300 days. You know, I think, given the, that this may trail into the winter season, we wanted to give a little bit of a buffer there to ensure that, you know, hopefully it'll be done before the winter shutdown, but in the event that it does have to go through the winter, pending weather, obviously, you know, we wanted to give a, a little buffer. But yeah, the, the, the entire project would have to be completed in 300 days under the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I do have a question, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hyde, for your time. Appreciate it. Just a quick question. So I'm new to the board as of a year ago, and when I first came on, we approved, I think it was $2 million for this project. So I guess this is 1.3 on top of the two. What is left to finish this project? Will this now complete the project?
Yeah, so I'm not entirely sure what the original two was for. I can-
Just to point out, it's, it's just so there's no confusion. Before we got to the contract, we voted to authorize the bonding. So the, the bonding that we approved was the pool of money that could be used for the project. This contract for 1.4 million is the actual construction contract that's gonna utilize the 2 million we previously approved. So we, we approve all of the steps as we go along. The funding source, then the contract, also the 53 million of the item number five below, the almost 54 million will be part of that same pool. So it's not that this is additional money. This is how we actually spend the money that we previously approved.
Thanks for clarifying that. I'm all set then. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? So hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the construction contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. The contract is approved. And Mr. Hyde, if I could just ask the information that Alderman Lopez was looking for, if you could email that to the clerk's office, and then we'll have the clerk email it out to all the Aldermen, so we'll all have the same, the same info. That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to clarify that, you're just looking for total lump sum of each bid?
Yes, Alderman, is that correct?
Versus a line-by-line breakdown.
Yeah, we normally, amongst all the documents that, that I received, I did not see the list of all the bidders. You, you mentioned, I, I noticed that 17 people attended the initial meeting or the walkthrough. 10 of those 17 individuals or companies submitted a bid, nine qualified. All I'm looking for is the actual list, company name, and the bid, the amount of their bid. That's all. And it's normally part of the, of the documents that, that we get. It's just not included in this information. That's all.
Gotcha. I apologize for that, and we'll make sure to include that type of information going forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
With that, item number five is an amendment to the architect or engineer agreement for the Prospect Street Parking Facility for not to exceed amount of $53,590 between SLR International Corporation and SLR Global Limited, SLR in the city of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number five.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the amendment to the agreement, and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. The contract is approved. Item number six is a student intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University for a three-week period at no cost for social work student internships. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
Motion, Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the affiliation agreement, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Item number seven is an agreement with the Waterford Country School Incorporated for a three-year period at a not-to-exceed amount of $225,800. Okay, can I just ask everybody who's not speaking again to mute, because we're getting that same feedback. It's feeding through someone's speaker. Thank you. It's an agreement with the Waterford Country School Incorporated for a three-year period at a not-to-exceed amount of $225,879.45 to provide special education services to students with disabilities. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Are there any questions or any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the agreement, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the agreement is approved. Item number eight is a construction contract with SK Mechanical LLC at a not-to-exceed amount of $287,155 for the Walsh Elementary School Boiler Replacement Program. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number eight.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the construction contract, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The agreement is approved. Item number nine is a construction contract with Creative Recreation LLC at a not-to-exceed amount of $194,236 for the Wendell Cross Elementary School Playground, construction Phase Four of the Wendell Cross Construction Project. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number nine.
Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the construction contract, and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the construction contract is approved. Item number 10 is requesting approval of the Bunker Hill Branch Fiber Buildout for the installation of a fiber link between the Silas Brunson Library downtown and the Bunker Hill Branch Library. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number 10.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the fiber buildout, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Standing Committee is to request for tax refunds for overpayments in the amounts of $88,508.70 and $37,427.34. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to refuse, accept the refunds.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded to approve the refunds for overpayments. Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the refunds, and no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the refunds are approved. With that, there is no further business now. I would entertain a motion that we return to the regular order of business. Alderman Brunelli?
Mr. President.
Alderman Lopez?
There's a, there's a list of reimbursements after the 88,000. There's something else for 37,000.
After the 37,000?
Yeah.
All right, hold on.
There's a second page. So the first one has the 88,508 total, and there's another list of 37,427.
There's three pages of reimbursements. One is one individual, one for 85.
Yep.
And then the second page is to add up to 37,000.
37. So the, yeah, it, there's one page, I'm trying, I'm trying to bring it up on the computer with everything else, but it's, one page is for the, of one refund, which is the 85 or the 88,000, and then the other two pages totaled to 37,427.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion was to approve both of those refunds. Is that clear?
I second.
Is that clarified? Okay. Yep, okay. So that's, the motion was made and seconded, and we, and we voted to approve them. So we're all set. Okay. So the motion then, at this point, Alderman Brunelli, would be to return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to go back, and no vote will be to stay at the committee of the whole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. We're back to the regular order of business. So the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to receive and place on file. Item two is on consent to approve proclaiming April as fair housing month. Item number three is on consent to set a public hearing with respect to the ordinance amendments for the Department of Engineering for April 5 at 6:55 p.m. Item four is on consent to approve the construction contract for the Prospect Street Parking Facility. Item five is on consent to approve amendment to the architect and engineer agreement for that project. Items number six is on consent to approve the student intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut. Item seven is on consent to approve an agreement with the Waterford Country School for special education services. Item eight is on consent to approve a construction contract for the Walsh Elementary School Boiler Replacement. Item nine is on consent to approve the construction contract for the Wendell Cross Elementary School Playground. And item 10 is on consent to approve the Bunker Hill Branch Fiber Buildout for the installation of fiber link between the Silas Brunson Library downtown and the Bunker Hill Branch. And the standing committee is on consent to refund tax overpayments in the amounts of $88,508.70 and $37,427.34. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as presented, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Just before we end tonight, I just want to remind you that you should be getting a notice in the next couple of days for the mayor's budget presentation, which is gonna occur a week from tonight at 7 o'clock, March 29. That'll be a Zoom meeting. And then that night will set the, the first public hearing, but I would anticipate that that will be before our next regular meeting, which is on April 5. So before the, actually, the public hearing and the budget would be just before the public hearing that we set tonight for the amendment to the ordinances. And we can discuss the time when we get together on the 29th. So with that, unless there's anything else, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
I'm sorry, who did? Oh, Alderman Matthews? I'm sorry, Alderman Matthews?
Thank you, President Fernerousky. I, I want to speak on something that I saw the past week, well, actually, I've been involved with for about six weeks now. Tonight, I would like to call to attention to the events that have taken place at Berkeley Heights housing project. The living conditions inside Berkeley Heights are absolutely deplorable. Our citizens in Berkeley, in the Berkeley community deserve better. The neglect by the Waterbury Housing Authority is shameful. I make motion that Mayor Neil Lyres suspend more revival immediately without pay from her business.
Alderman, we, we've just gone through the calendar this evening and all of the items. There's nothing pending for action. This period at the end is just for things, if people want to, you know, bring up certain things, bring to the attention of the Alderman, but it's not a period where we're, we're done with the business portion, then there's no item on the agenda. So there's no motion that can be made at this point in business.
What I will do, I'm going to email you so this can be on our next agenda, because this is, it's totally uncalled for. It's totally uncalled for. So I will be, I will bring it to your attention. I will bring it to the minorities' attention as well, so that you guys can discuss this and make sure that it gets on the agenda.
Anything, anyone have anything else? All right. Hearing then, nothing, then the motion pending is a motion, Alderman Brunelli, did you make the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion pending is motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, to adjourn. We'll see you next Monday.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Have a good week.